Thank you, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. So, uh.
I was sitting there the whole time and I'm like, no, that's a good one.
Well, yes, so this seat, that seat, this one, those are the hot seats. Yeah, yeah, so you're good, huh? Pretty good, pretty good. Yes.
Check, check, one, two.
Found one? Yeah, I did, I did have one.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen. Again, we apologize for the delay. They are still in closed session. They expect another five minutes. Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen. Again, we apologize for the delay. They are still in closed session. They expect another five minutes.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, good evening, good evening. Apologies, apologies to everyone watching online as well as those of you who are here in person for the delay. We had a, had a long agenda in executive session, so apologies, but I will call this meeting of the Kansas City Public School Board of Directors for February ninth to order. All right, June, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Barca.
Present.
Ms. Buckner. Ms. Cortez.
Here.
Ms. Ford.
Here.
Dr. Jones.
Present.
Ms. Wolfsee.
Here.
Mr. Hogan.
Here. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda as currently stated?
No move.
One second. All right, June, will you call a roll?
Mr. Barca.
Yes.
Ms. Cortez.
Yes.
Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, the motion passes. All right, June, will you do a quick review of the old action items, please? Are there not any?
There are none. All of the action items have been resolved.
Awesome, thank you, Dr. Beale and team. All right, Dr. Beale, with that, I'll turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have, our workshop presentation today will be on 1.1, I-Ready and Senate Bill 319. And I think we're ready to get into that presentation. We will have Dr. Philip Jones, who will come up and do that presentation on behalf of school leadership.
Okay. Good evening, Dr. Beale, Board Chair Hogan, board members, those that are watching online. I'm Dr. Philip Jones. Right now, I'm the interim Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, to be the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Grandma back in the day said, "Son, ask for what you want."
Dr. Phil, can you maybe speak up a little bit or get a little closer to the microphone?
Got it, can you hear me?
That's perfect, thank you.
Marvelous. So, I will start with the Board Policy Monitoring 1.1. So, before we get into this, talking about I-Ready and talking about Senate Bill 319, I want to give a little bit of history and a little bit of context. So, I-Ready replaced NWEA back in 2018. This is our assessment diagnostic tool. And here's what I mean by diagnostic tool. Just like if you, you know, go to a car shop or anything of that nature, you did a diagnostic report on a car, the diagnostic assessment kind of gives us an idea of where our students are in the realm of reading and in math. Now, the reason why we replaced NWEA with I-Ready is because with I-Ready, it was more correlated to what we find with our MAP, which is the Missouri Assessment Program. That's the test that, you know, kids take at the end of the year. And because it was more closely correlated, we found that this was a better test for giving us an idea of where our kids are. In addition to that, you find that it allowed us to have some predictability on what we get for our MPI, the Missouri Performance Index. Just think of that as like that score that you get to find out where schools are. So, as you can see from the slide, back in 2019, we were able to really look at what was the predicted value for reading. And at the time, I already said that our predicted value would be 259. And when we actually got our MPI for that year, it was 257.9. So, it was only off by 1.1. When we looked at math, we saw that the difference was even smaller. You know, I already had us having a predicted MPI of 22.8. When we actually got our score, our, our... When we actually got our score, or our, that, you know, value, it was 22.72. So, it was only off by 0.8. So, that's the main reason for, you know, our, our switching over from NWEA to I-Ready. Now, currently, we give the I-Ready test to all of our students kindergarten through eighth grade, and we give it three times a year. So, that's one in the fall, one in the winter, and one in the spring. And the main reason for doing this, as I said, is to give us that, that diagnostic or that idea of where kids are. And looking at the grade level that, you know, we could prescribe the student would be as far as reading and math. And so, here's what I'm saying. Based on that assessment, we would say, "Well, what would a third-grade student need to know to, to be proficient in reading?" And we could look to see if that student is either below grade level, on grade level, or above grade level. And the same thing for math. Now, this slide is one that we showed you this fall. And what it really hones in on is the fact that if you look at the data that we received this year, we're talking about school year '22, and compare that to the data that we had in school year 2020, and, and that's that 2019, 2020 school year, it's very comparable in the percentages of our Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three students. And let me really, you know, bring home what that means. First of all, you have to understand that right now, you know, we have experienced some of the interruptions to learning. You know, those interruptions being things like COVID, things like having quarantines, students being out, teachers being out. And when we look back in that 2019, 2022 school year, we were really growing as far as our proficiency levels. We were growing as far as the number of students that were in Tier One and Tier Two. Well, looking at this data, what it really shows is that we are getting back to where we were as we were making that ascent to where we really need to be. The other thing that this data also shows is, you know, if we look at both our reading and our math and compare that to what we are seeing now, just like in that 2019, 2020 school year, we are increasing the number of students that are in Tier One and Tier Two, as well as decreasing the number of students in Tier Three. Now, one of the things that I definitely want to do for everyone here is draw your attention to what the tiers really mean. I mean, there are colors on the screen, and we call it Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three, but let's really be specific about what we're talking about. Think of Tier One as being on grade level, okay? So, that would be, you know, if you're a third-grade student, knowing those standards at the third-grade level. Think of that Tier Two, that yellow, as being one year below grade level, and then Tier Three would be two or more years below grade level. So, when we compare the fall I-Ready and the winter I-Ready for this year, you can see with these two graphs that we are doing exactly, you know, what we're setting out to do, which is to grow Tier One and Tier Two while reducing Tier Three. One thing that I definitely want to bring your attention to with these two is that, if you notice, with math, we're actually decreasing that Tier Three at a little faster rate than we are with reading. And that's very important because we've seen across this state and even across this country, math is one of those areas that students have had some, some issues with as far as getting over the obstacles that we're, you know, we're facing with this interruption in learning. Now, I want to zero in and really focus in on Tier Three for reading because that brings us to the second part of this discussion, which is our Senate Bill 319 students. So, for those of you who are not familiar with SB 319, Senate Bill 319 is an unfunded mandate that really looks at how students who are moving to that next grade level, where they are in terms of reading. And as you can see, we're really looking at those students who have a reading ability that are two or more grade levels behind that target grade. Now, the way that the bill was written, we really started looking at this at the end of the third-grade year. So, that's kind of like where that designation begins, but we focus on Senate Bill 319 students in the fourth grade. So, as you can see, once we have identified potential students, there are two things that we need to do. One, provide tutoring specific to that reading instruction. But two, also have this individual plan, this learning plan for that student so that the student and their families will know what steps are being made to close that gap and get them not just one grade level below, but get them back to being on grade level. So, during the summertime, we offer 40 hours of instruction specifically for those students in reading. After the summer, if we find that students are still in this category of being two or more grade levels behind, that's when they would receive that Senate Bill 319 designation in their fourth-grade year. And at that point, there's an additional 30 hours of tutoring that they get that is outside of the regular school day. So, as you can see, you know, that designation starts in fourth grade, you know, the bill allows it to stay until sixth grade. But the main thing that I wanted to point out is that students are able to, to get out of this designation or matriculate from this designation by closing that gap. And what we're really talking about is moving kids from that Tier Three, two years or more behind, into Tier Two and then Tier One. Now, there are categories of students that are exempt from this. The first being any student regardless of whether it's our district or if they come from another district that has been kept back at least one year. So, they're not part of this Senate Bill 319 designation. The second group would be any student that's receiving special education services of any type. And then the third group would be students that have been deemed or have the designation of ELL or ESOL, okay? So, from a historical standpoint, looking at where our Senate Bill 319 students, we're talking about fourth-grade students, have been in the past. If you see here, in school year 2019, 2020, we had about 239 students that had that Senate Bill 319 designation in the fall, the beginning of their fourth-grade year. In 2020, 2021, we see that we had 223 students. Now, as I said, everyone knows we've had interruptions due to, you know, everything from students being out, teachers being out. And part of that is we're going to see an increase in the numbers. And again, this is across the state, this is across our country. And so, that's one reason why, if you notice, this school year, we had a little bit of a jump going to 287 students. With the current data that we have from I-Ready, it is encouraging in the fact that we're seeing that we are decreasing that number, decreasing the number of students that have this designation. So, as you can see, when we started out the school year, we had 287 students that had that Senate Bill 319 designation. At the current time, we have been able to move 40% of those students into an area where, if they were booked at today, would be outside of that designation. And here's what we're talking about. 82 of those students that initially started two or more years behind are now either one year behind or at grade level. There's an additional 33 students that are right there at the point at which they would also be out of that Tier Three into that Tier Two. So, we're going to keep, you know, pressing, we're going to keep up the, the tutoring, and we definitely believe that we'll be able to help all of these students, you know, matriculate out of and get out of that Senate Bill 319 designation before the end of the school year. Now, just going over some of the successes of our data such, thus far. So, first of all, I definitely want to say, you know, we're seeing that what we've been putting in place as far as raising Tier One and Tier Two is actually working and decreasing Tier Three, specifically looking at reading, decreasing that Tier Three number by 11%, with math decreasing that Tier Three number by 13%. In addition to that, we know that, yes, you know, there have been some interruptions to learning that, you know, come about through staffing shortages and things of that nature. And we're still seeing that we are on track to continue that growth, the same growth that we had before COVID, before the quarantines, before all of the, the things that we have to currently deal with in this, this current day and age. And again, with our Senate Bill 319 students, we have been able to move 40% of them out of that Tier Three status into the Tier Two and Tier One status. So, looking at, you know, what we've done and looking at where we would like to go, there's a couple of things that I definitely want to point out. So, first of all, as I said, with the interruptions, we want to continue and will continue to push the idea that we have to be very targeted in how we help our students. And I'm saying this at the classroom level as well as at the building level. And that's one reason why we're continuing to have the PDs, the professional development, dealing with our proficiency scales. And for those that are not familiar, just think of a proficiency scale as a way of visualizing learning, going from simple to more complex. But the main thing that I want to point out with this is that the internalization process is something that will definitely help us continue to move students into Tier One. And the reason is because it reminds teachers of some of those things that, you know, when you're planning for your, your class or when you're planning for a particular unit, just make sure that what you're doing lines up with that standard because our standards are at the Tier One. And that's really what's being, you know, expressed and articulated in this first, two bullets. Secondly, as we look at growth in specific areas, we definitely know that we want to help our students in reading, we want to help them in math, but there's certain areas that we can increase that growth. When we're looking at reading, one of the things that we find is that vocabulary and comprehension are two areas that we really need to help our students with. And to do that, we're helping or making sure that teachers and buildings focus on vocabulary and having that academic vocabulary be present and visible. In addition to that, reminding the teachers of the science of reading, and that's where the letters comes in. There is a process by which individuals learn how to read. And for most of our educators, they were exposed to that process, but it's just reminding them that, okay, you know, before you go from just understanding sounds to actually being able to comprehend text, there are checkpoints. Remember those checkpoints as we help our students. And we find that this type of focused instruction is not just for reading, but you find it in math. It's just that they have different names. So, if you notice here, I have number and number operations as one of those areas that a lot of our students are still having issues with. And when we're talking about numbers and number operation, we're really talking about like number values, especially with our younger kids. In operations, things like addition, subtraction, you know, multiplication, division, just knowing what they are. The second side of this, which is that algebraic learning and then also looking at measurements, that's where you get to the application science of math. And that's where we're really talking about making sure that students know when to multiply, making sure that they understand certain vocabulary words. There's a lot of kids who don't, don't understand that when we say product, that we're really talking about, you know, multiplication. Or when we say sum, that we're really talking about addition. But again, just reminding teachers, these are the types of things that'll help our students be very successful in these two areas. And then the last point, having data is great, but we have to have it in such a way that it can really tell a tale. And the tale that we're looking for is how are our students doing? So, with many of the schools, they said the data deep dive protocol is something that they enjoy, that enjoy using it and that was beneficial, but it was a little cumbersome. So, one of the things that, you know, we are doing and we've done is listen to the fact that, you know, we respect our teachers, we respect our principals, and where we can, we will make those adjustments to help them be more successful. So, looking at I-Ready and the I-Ready team, we're really leveraging that partnership to make sure that, once we get these numbers, that buildings know what to do with them. So, this is an example of one of the reports that we can use from I-Ready and that we have been using. And this is the school data report. And the reason that I start with this is we want to make sure that principals and school leadership know, you know, three main questions as it relates to their data for their students. First of all, what is the percentage of your students that are on grade level or below grade level or even above grade level? The second question is, you know, looking at this, what domains should your building focus on? Like I said, when we look at reading, we have those two, you know, vocabulary and then comprehension. And then when we look at math, you know, we're talking about the number sense and things of that nature. But identifying which ones you should be focused on, building-wide, as well as the last bullet, which is looking at the progression of your students. How well are they doing with this process? From the teacher's side, there's a similar document to this one, just like that says school data, there's one that says classroom data. For teachers, we want to make sure that as they're moving forward, they really look at, "How is my instruction affecting my students?", especially around, like I said, Tier One, that, those standards, okay? In addition to that, we definitely know that there are times when you have great days, knock it out of the park. And there's times where, "Hmm, I could have done that a little bit better." And that's where that review comes in because you will have to spiral. And then the last part, the preview, really speaks to some of the things that we talk about with culturally responsive teaching. And that is, there are going to be some things that our children come to school with, knowledge that they've had that we don't even know because we didn't teach it. We have to have a way of monitoring that and celebrating that and making sure that teachers know, "Okay, I don't have to spend a whole lot of time on this. I can go to something else because my students already know this." The last one, which is the most important, is the student data sheet, and this is where we're going. And the reason is because it's great for the principal to know how their students are doing. It's great for the teachers to know, but it's imperative, so important for the student to know how he or she is doing and for their family to know. So, that's where we really look at students and family knowing what type of instruction the student is getting. And more important, what type of intervention as well as enrichment the student has gotten or could get. Now, as I said in the beginning, I-Ready really looks at grades kindergarten through eight. But we know that there is another assessment different from the MAP that we have for our high school students, the end-of-course exam, EOCs. And one of the things about data is it can live in both realms. Meaning, we looked at the sheets, the data reports that we're using for our middle school and elementary schools, and we said, "This could be used for our high schools as well." And just like leveraging that I-Ready team, we're leveraging the instructional coaches in the building to help with this process. And it's the same three questions that we ask at the elementary level that we're asking at the high school level. Really looking at what you're doing as far as your instruction, how does that align to the standard, where your students are, and then that reflection piece of, "Okay, how could I do this better and what is it that I can change?" Timelines and action plans. So, as we move forward, looking at, well, what is left on the table, what are things that we are going to be doing? First of all, we have two district-wide PDs set up, one in February and one in April. And during these PDs, besides going over the learning, the internalization, we really want to hone in on making sure that everybody understands about what is expected with the MAP and the EOC. You know, these are, are two tests that are very important, but for some, they just have to, you know, be refreshed on, "Okay, what it means to take this." And I'm talking about the building level. In addition to that, as I said, we had a winter I-Ready test and we had an interim too. But those didn't cover some of the standards that we find in quarter three. So, that's one reason why our interim three assessment is going to be given kindergarten through eighth grade, and that's going to happen March 7th through the 18th. And then the last thing, using our instructional coaches. One of the things that we really believe is with having those instructional coaches in the building, it's so key to make sure that they help with this message about internalization. And so, we have for the elementary schools or the elementary instructional coaches, two more opportunities before the end of the year, one in February and one in March to again go over these internalization steps so they could help those teachers at the elementary level. And for the secondary level, there's three. One, February 28th, another one, March 28th, and then the final one, April 18th, all of which will be before we get to the MAP and the EOC. I know that this slide says barriers, but actually, I want to think of it more as obstacles. A barrier is something that, that keeps you in a place. An obstacle is something that you just have to get around or get over. So, some of the obstacles that we still have is the fact that, you know, with the interruptions that we, we've seen with COVID, some of those are still in place. And I just heard this morning that, you know, we, as far as Missouri, we're number nine on the list of, of deaths due to COVID. So, it is something that's very real in our community and in our state. In addition to that, we In addition to that, we know, just like statewide, there are some shortages, not only in human capital, but in teachers. And although our shortages aren't as bad as some of the surrounding districts, we do see, you know, some of the fallout from that. One of the things that, that, that leads to is the lack of subs. And I have to say, thank you, thank you, thank you to all of our teachers who take their planned time to help fill in when their colleagues are out due to illness, due to being quarantined, because that is a big help. But we do realize that what they're doing is giving up that ability to plan during the day. And we definitely want to recognize that as one of the obstacles. And lastly, the curriculum coordinators, as well as the people here in the central office, they have gone out to help support buildings where they sub for the entire day. And normally, our coordinators would be able to help teachers one-on-one. But again, we realize the need in taking that stress off of the buildings. And so we are working out ways for them to be able to help teachers in a way that normally, you know, they would just be able to do during the day. So with that being said, that's my last slide. So are there any questions as it relates to the Board Monitoring Policy 1.1?
Thank you, Dr. Phil. Ms. Buckner.
I'm really excited about the data dives that y'all are going to be doing. I, I just wonder about, like, is this a data dive? Or is this a data cycle that teachers are really like learning how to do? Like, how are we closing the loop on the action steps? Like, what does that look like before the map test?
Right. And that's one reason why I said, you know, we're leveraging that iReady team, because a lot of that is really looking at all of this information that we're getting. And again, like you said, how to use that right now to change instruction. As I said, with the secondary level, that's one reason why we're having those instructional coaches push in. Because they're there with the teachers every single day to help them work through this process. And one of the things that was on that slide is that they are leading this discussion in the professional learning communities at the building. And that is the key, making sure that professional learning communities get the help that they need, because our buildings have them. But it's just going that extra step to say, okay, you have this data. Here's another way of looking at it to be able to get a better picture of how you can help your students.
Okay. Another thing I'm really excited about is you mentioned, like, really teaching teachers how to, or reiterating, like, how to teach reading, right? And really digging into brain science and things like that. What I, what I would love to hear more of when we start talking about, like, some shifts that we're making, like, especially as we go into Blueprint 2030, like, how can we, our professional development, ensure that our teachers are becoming content experts, not curriculum followers, right?
Definitely.
That makes all the difference.
Definitely.
And so, yes, we need, I think we're taking the right and the same, in the right direction with, like, getting our teachers to be data analysts, right? They have to be, they absolutely have to be content experts. And so we need to shift our thinking about PD on how to make that happen.
I, I agree a hundred percent, and I'm happy to hear that, that you see that. Thank you.
Yeah. And then I'm looking at the iReady data. And I liked, I love that, the, the growth here that I'm seeing, more students being pushed into tier one and the, and the decrease in tier two and tier three. I know iReady gives, like, data, comparison data against other districts, like, and I'm, and I'm, I'm kind of fogging out iReady, so correct me if I'm wrong. Is there like a, a growth goal, like, that's typical?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Like, are, are we in the typical range? Like, what, what, do we have that data?
So there, there, there is a, a matrix that they use for that growth goal. Typical growth, I think they have it somewhere between 15 to 20. And then, and it depends on the tier, because some of the tiers, you find that you actually have more growth than others. Ironically, tier three, because you're, you're lower, you actually have a higher growth potential than tier one. And, and that's because you're closer to the ceiling. So they, they do have that. So we have what is called typical growth and stretch growth. And the nice thing about, you know, this particular platform is they did the, the, the research in looking at districts across our state, which again, goes to the fact that a lot of their domains align with what we have with the map. And so that is kind of how we get this projection.
So do we have, do you have that data to give to us, is what I'm saying?
Oh, yes.
So that we could see, like, if we are in, if we, if we really should, not that we should, we wouldn't celebrate any small growth, but like, I want to know how mu, how, what kinds of questions I need to be asking. And I think that would inform that.
And we, we can pull that forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Bell.
I'm so sorry. I just wanted to just, did you say we're looking for content experts rather than curriculum experts? Thank you. That's, that's.
A quotable moment. Ms., Ms. Ford.
I have a few questions on Senate Bill 319.
Okay.
I don't know if this has been provided to us before. It likely has. But I'm curious to know more about who those 287 students are, like, what do we know about them? So that could be something that we receive at a later time. But I'm just curious to know, what do they look like, what schools they go to, all of that stuff? Just to see what we can learn about that. I'm also curious to know, do these students receive any type of special designation? I'm wanting to know if their, if that classification changes anything with their day-to-day experience by being designated as, you know?
So, so that's part of the, you know, the whole discussion about having the tutoring outside of, of the, you know, of the school day. So it's not as if it's a pullout where they're not receiving their tier one instruction. This is an addition. And I think that this is very good, because what it allows us to do is be able to get them into that tier two and tier three without disrupting anything with the tier one instruction. So, yeah, it, it's not as if it is a, a, I'm removing you from your teacher for a part of the day.
It has no bearing on what is happening to their experience during the daytime.
No, it's, it's just a way that, that we track what we're doing.
And we classify.
And then, yeah, we can report that to the state.
Got it. And I also just wanted to know, who is doing the tutoring? Is that being done by teachers or is that someone else?
Yes, we do have teachers that, that do the tutoring. They do follow some of the same things that we do for our interventionists. And again, you know, that's one reason why, you know, we're finding that they're able to move students from that tier three into the tier two and tier one category.
And then my final question is, it seems to be such, like, a lot of growth with that particular program. And I just am wondering if there are any elements of it that we might be able to apply to other students that might not fall into this classification as 319. But that's just like a comment, doesn't need to be answered, but that's all.
Okay. You definitely got that. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Phil.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Dr. Bedell.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Dr. Jones. And dry runs do pay off, right? Great job. It's all about growth here, everybody. So I wanted to move over to the approval of the FY22 Comprehensive Budget Amendment. And we will have Ms. Erin Thompson, who will come up and take us through this presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. I feel like I need wipes, but okay. Good evening, Board Chair Hogan, board members. On behalf of Dr. Bedell, the administration is requesting your approval of Budget Amendment 1 for this, this school year. The amount of the budget will go to $321,874,330. The entire budget document was placed on assembly for your review. This summarizes the budget. It shows that our original budget was the $300,664,404. Will go to the $321,874,330. This is an increase of $21,209,926. Those are all our local and federal grants that we got after the initial budget. This will take our fund balance to $91,667,866, and that's 28.5%. This next page, I kind of just did a summary of our largest grants that we got, additional amounts. Title funds were $6,353,505. And that change usually comes because at the beginning, Desi doesn't know what the final allocation is going to be until we do our September 30th final report of expenditures. And so they adjust it and they give us a total. And that total went to $17,261,785. The same with Head Start. They're on a different schedule, fiscal year schedule than we are. So we got an additional $5,388,726 for Head Start for that Mark contract. And exceptionally, Ed had a carryover of entitlement of $4,414,706. And then also our SRR1 we carried over because we hadn't finished all our SRR expenditures. Most of it was for non-public, and we also had some Chromebooks that did come in. So that balance has gone down now. And then SRR2, we got $29,62900. That was a variance of $713,905. So we got additional $21 million in our budget that we just need you to accept. I'm sure you will.
No, we don't want the money. Any, thank you, Ms. Thompson. Any questions? I'm not seeing any. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Cortez.
Mine is really less a question than a comment. Ms. Thompson and Ms. Quinley, I want to thank you for the detail that you've provided. I know that you provided the additional detail related to some of the different categories of expenditure. I think that was helpful for us to understand. But I want to, I want to thank you for the time you've taken, both with the Finance Committee and in preparation to make sure that things are broken down in a way that are translatable for those of us who don't live in the budget world.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the FY2022 Comprehensive Budget consisting of General Fund, Teachers' Fund, Capital Projects Fund, and Child Nutrition Services Fund for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022?
Summate.
Second.
All right, Jen, will you call the roll?
Mr. Barca.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner. Ms. Cortez.
Yes.
Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, the motion passes.
All right, Mr. Chair, this last item under the superintendent's report is the KFT, KCPS-AFT Collective Bargaining Agreement. And I'll, I'll pass that over to you as the Board Chair regarding this, this particular item.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. So I think I want to seek a motion to table the discussion on this particular item. I, I want to make it clear to both our union partners as well as this community that we absolutely are ecstatic as a full board, particularly about the, the increases in teacher pay. It's huge. It was really, really great to see, I don't know how much of the details I can get into here, but to see the increases across multiple, multiple levels of teacher experience, particularly at the, the starting pay range. And so it makes us highly, highly competitive with our peer districts across not just this metro area, but across the state as a whole. So we're all very, very excited about that and what that'll mean for both teacher recruitment and retention. Also, though, you know, we, we would like to get some clarity around one of the elements specific to the second semester parent-teacher conferences, making sure that we've got an element of in-person opportunities for our students and their families to interact with the teachers. That's really important. We feel like that in-person engagement will be better for some parents. It may not work for every parent, and allowing that flexibility, I think, is good for, you know, virtual settings or direct phone calls. But having an option for parents to meet with their teachers and their students' teachers directly in person is, is really valuable time for, for a segment of our parent population. And then the only additional thing I would mention here is, you know, given the academic vision and the boldness of that academic vision that Dr. Bedell and Dr. Collier have presented to this community, we know that there's a lot of work that has to be done in terms of educating not just teachers, but the entire district staff to make sure we can deliver on that vision in a meaningful timeframe. And as accelerated of a timeframe as is possible. And so that professional development will be a key element of delivering on the academic vision that's been painted for this community. And so we hope to see more of that professional development in future agreements with the union. And so with that being said, is there a motion to table this particular item?
Summate.
Is there a second? All right, Jen, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca.
No.
Ms. Buckner.
I just want to be clear that it's a motion to table it?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes the business items.
Awesome. Okay. Well, we'll move into ad hoc committee reports. And who would like to start? All right, Ms. Woolsey.
I have something exciting to share. So on January 19th, we did our first KCPS Lobby Day down in Jefferson City. We took a small cohort this first time, just to kind of, you know, protocols and whatnot down there. But it consisted of district administration, some folks from the board, a couple of parents, a principal. We had a student and an alumni, a recent student alumni. And I'd say it was pretty successful. I just, we were able to meet with our local delegation. But then we also spent some time with both senators and House members, some of which who are on the education committees in their various chambers. And we had some very, we had some good conversations. Of course, we were coming off the high of full accreditation announcement, which was always a good opener. But I, I'd like to say that one of the things that we were actually able to accomplish was we had a meeting with the chair, I guess it is, of the Senate Education Committee, who we had really wanted to make sure that she had an opportunity to come and visit us. This was something we'd done earlier in this year where we'd invited legislators and she wasn't able to. But we, you know, these are folks who, we don't necessarily always end up on the same side of issues, but we were able to have a really good dialogue with her, find some common ground. And she made a commitment to come and visit us and come see a couple of schools. So, you know, just all around a good experience. We're hoping that this will be the first of many, that we would like to, over time, build out our cadre of people that would be interested in this. And I think a lot of the parents, they came back kind of jazzed about being able to participate. Using your voice is a very powerful feeling, I think, sometimes. So all in all, a good experience. I want to make sure everybody knows our next government relations meeting is February 15th. And there is a, an MSBA Legislative Day, but for the life of me, I don't remember when it is right now. I think it's in March?
March 7.
I'll find out and I'll get back to you on that. Sorry.
March 7.
Okay.
March 7.
March 7. So put that on your calendars if you're interested. It's a little different than what we experienced. It'll mostly be meeting other folks from MSBA. I'm not sure if we'll go ahead and schedule meetings that day as well. But if you have any interest in that, let me know.
Mr. Barca?
Yeah, if I could just tag on and, and, and give Jen the kudos that she deserves, as well as the administration for orchestrating that trip to Jefferson City. It, it has been one of my best trips to Jefferson City and most successful advocacy efforts from both Linda and Jen. And I think it's important to note that we didn't just go down in some traditional advocacy methods and meet with friends. We went and talked to folks that were challenging to have conversations with, and we found common ground in many places. So kudos again to really the team and Barge and Associate Chris Ropie. It was the parents, the students, the alumni, everyone who participated. It was a truly great opportunity. And encourage those folks listening over here today, if you haven't already plugged in, this is a great opportunity to get some experience and, and help support the district.
I wanted to add, and thank you, because I totally forgot to do my thanks. Linda Quinley really was phenomenal in helping plan this. You were our den mother most of that day as well, keeping us in line. Yes, snacks. You know how it is. We have to. You know how it is, we have to keep him fed at all times. But, and of course, really, Chris Ropie, we can't say enough, and Erica Leonard, I believe, as well, they were happy to walk us around, and they just always do a phenomenal job. There was one other thing, and now I forgot it, so that's what I get for not being prepared.
Thanks, Ms. Wolfsee. Ms. Cortez?
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. The Finance Committee, actually, the outcome of our most recent meeting was presented at the last two board meetings. And, again, I want to express my thanks to Ms. Thompson and to Ms. Quinley for the dialogue that happens there. Gives us an opportunity to kind of help ask questions through the eyes of the board, so that we can make things clear. Our next meeting is, has shifted by a day. It will be on Thursday, February seventeenth, at eight AM. Finance meetings are scintillating, please join us. I love this stuff, but, you know, not everybody does, I get it. But truly, it is a good, it is good partnership, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez. Ms. Buckner?
Yes, so, the Communications and Community Engagement Committee met, please excuse me, I do not have dates in front of me, and everything's a blur. Y'all remember the date, but we recently met, and one thing that, one goal of the CCE Committee is to ensure that the board is being proactive and engaging community. And so, one idea that was birthed out of that mandate was to pull in our homeowners association, different organizations, and the first group that we are pursuing is our homeowners associations. And so, every board member is going to choose, you can't hear me. Oh, every board member is going to choose two to three homeowners associations to invite to our next meeting, and we hope to get three things. The first one is perception data, like, what have they heard, right? The second, or what are the hopes and dreams for the district that we can use to bring back to administration? And then, lastly, the feedback on engagement. Do they feel that engagement has been appropriate? Do they feel like, you know, the district has been transparent in its goals? And so, that is something that we are working toward, and the next push, oh, and, Dr. Bedell, I meant to reach out to you and also ask you, another idea is to get board members in to parent-teacher conferences, just to see, like, be in buildings if they're going to be in person. And so, we can talk later offline about that, but I'm not sure if they're in person or virtual this year. All of them are virtual. Just, okay. Awesome. Well, that's something that we can look into for next year. Awesome.
Any questions for any of the committees? Does your, remember your point, Ms. Wolfsee? Thank you, Ms. Buckner.
My point was actually that if you are listening or watching, whether you're a student, a parent, a community member, a principal, a teacher, that is interested in going with us to Jefferson City sometime to lobby or testify, send a note to legislativealerts@kcpublicschools.org and just let us know, because we, that's the hardest thing, is finding the people that have the passion to do this kind of work. So, I just wanted to put that plug out there.
I like it. Thank you. All right. Well, we'll move right along here. A couple of announcements. One, I'll start with, we are moving our March twenty-third board meeting, because that was actually scheduled during spring break, and we want to make sure administration has that time for themselves and their families. These guys put a ton of work and preparation into preparing for these board meetings, so we want to make sure that they have that time off to relax and refresh, and we're going to move that to March thirtieth. So, just for the community and those who are watching or show up, I want you to know about that. And then, I'll turn it over to Mr. Barca for a quick announcement on recognition.
I almost forgot, which I think my other half would probably kill me. I think Nate and, I'm assuming, several others on the board have asked me to recognize National Counselors Week, and because I'm married to one, I think that's probably why I was suggested to thank all of the hard work and challenge, challenges that our counselors have faced. And I know the district has done several, I think, post-recognizing Counselors Week, but just to say from the board, from this member who's married to a counselor, thank you all for what you do. We know that it is incredibly hard to go day by day, sorry, that was a preemptive thing, day by day, and doing all the hard things that you do, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barca. Thank you for all of our counselors. I know, I know the counselors had. I know a counselor was pivotal in your maturation as a young man, and so, what? No!
Jim Brady, Jim Brady.
I don't mean that, no. Why, my goodness. This is a cynical group. All right. Well, with that being said, we're going to, we're going to move right along. Go ahead. So, look, I probably should have prepared something on this. I'm sure Dr. Jones doesn't love this sort of recognition, but she's going to get it anyway. Look, I think it's an incredible accomplishment, and I would welcome other board members to chime in as they feel necessary, and you as well, Dr. Bedell. To just watch you work, right, is incredible. It's been great on this board. You know, you're an incredibly respected colleague, but you're a friend, like, a real, true friend. And I've just, you know, I've grown as a person, knowing you, and the fact that you're going to, you know, continue to dedicate your life, I am not going to move along, to just making sure the people in this community are supported in the best of ways, and be able to lead this Health Department in Kansas City forward and into the future, I think, is an incredible opportunity and quite the responsibility and challenge, but I know that you'll rise to the moment, and this community will be better for it. So, congratulations for your promotion to KC Health Department Director.
Okay. Well, I got to say y'all real slick, because I did not expect this, and it's already late, so I'm not going to make a lot of remarks. I just want to say, just honored and grateful to be serving in this capacity, and honored to serve in the next capacity for public health for our city. It's not going to be perfect, but I think I'll have the support of the community, and we'll make the best decisions we can and move forward in a way that benefits maybe some people who haven't been heard or seen. So, that's my goal, and so, thank you all for this recognition.
All right. Go ahead, Dr. Bedell.
Okay. I was just waiting to see if other colleagues, they probably already have congratulated you. You and I had an opportunity to talk on the phone when you found out that this was going to happen, and, you know, I told you, hey, I'm really excited. You're a shaker and mover. You get things done. You do it in a real quiet manner, and, you know, but it gets done, and I respect you for that. And we, on behalf of our team, on the administration side and on the faculty and staff side, we got a token of appreciation for you, that you can share with your family, because I know your husband and your boys would love to get into that basket. I love when I get them, and so does Cameron. All right. But congratulations.
Ms. Wolfsee.
I just, I'm not going to go on and on, but, Dr. Jones, your addition to this board, I've learned more just watching, as Dr. Bedell said, the way that you quietly move things forward is, is something we should all, it reminds me of the, you know, leading-from-behind comment that was made by someone earlier, and I just, I'm, when I saw the announcement, I was like, oh.
Yay!
I felt really good about where things were going. So, congratulations, well-deserved, and good luck.
Well, I, yeah, very, very, very cool. Okay, well, Dr. Bedell, I think that gets us close to, oh, actually, we've got one other item. June, will you please review the outstanding action items from tonight?
Well, I captured two of them, and one of them, Ms. Buckner, I did not catch it completely. It was regarding the growth rate?
I'm just interested in the data, if, if our growth is typical or not, or if, you know, across districts.
Let me just make sure I get that. What you're saying is, as it, as in comparison to other districts that are, that are iReady districts, where we can measure against typical growth? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and I might need to think about this question a little bit.
Okay.
I guess, yeah, let me think about it.
All right.
But I think, right now, off the top, I'm, is, yeah, is it typical growth?
Okay.
That I can think of right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, the second one I have, Ms. Ford, is regarding Senate Bill 319, and you wanted to know, who are the students? Did you want, I mean, kind of a breakdown of who are the students? Okay. Very good. Those are the only two items that I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, June. And, Dr. Bedell, I think we're going to turn it over to you for what we're talking about next week. There it is, right on your screen.
Thank you. So, the item that we asked the board to take action on at our next board meeting is AT&amp;T Corporation, one million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-four cents.
Perfect. All right. Any other questions, comments? So, Ms. Buckner?
Yes, I just want to, publicly, was called to my attention, I want to publicly apologize for naming the associations as homeowners associations. I understand that they are neighborhood associations, so I wanted to clear that up and apologize for anyone I may have offended.
Appreciate it. Well, any other comments, questions from the board? Dr. Bedell? Seeing none. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, guys.